Our Father in Heaven, we are truly grateful for giving a day of life that you've given to each of us. Thank you for your watching careovers and your love to us. Lord, we are mindful of those who are sick in our community, those who are grieving because of the passing of loved ones. We pray, Lord, that your Spirit would be close to them and comfort their hearts. I pray, Lord, that you help us as to show kindness and love to them. Ask you, Lord, as we take care of the business of this city, help us, Lord, to make wise decisions. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. Row call. Town of Vidalia, Board of Aldermen, row call for a regular meeting of the mayor and Board of Aldermen dated January 12th, 2021. Alderman Betts.
Present.
Alderwoman Denby.
Present.
Alderman Gardner.
Here.
Alderman Probst.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Mayor, let the record show that Alderman Gardner and Probst are present and accounted for via telephone under the state open meetings laws currently in place and that a forum of the board does exist. Okay. All right. In front of you have the minutes from the previous meeting. Can I have a motion that we accept those or if there's no question? Motion made by Alderman Smith, the second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Denby. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. We come to a part where we can take some public comment on some of our current agenda items by the public. And so at this point, I'm going to open it up. If anybody has any questions on any agenda item, if they want to ask that question or have comments about it, I would ask that, you know, at this time that you, you know, make any comments that you might have. Is there anybody from the floor that has any question or comments? Okay. Well, we're going to move on then with our meeting. No public comments. So number one, we're going to go to our number one agenda item, which is Ms. Moke. She's our CPA and going to do our financial statements for November 2020.
Okay. Tonight's financial statements include the balance sheet as of November the 30th, 2020, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the five months ending November 30th, 2020, a summary budget to actual comparison by fund, a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. These financial statements have been distributed to all department heads and Aldermen for their review. In summary, the town has combined cash in the bank of 9.6 million, which includes 7.7 million in the hydro and 714,000 in the sales tax fund. Investments of 3.9 million. The hydro reserve fund includes 2.4 of this 3.9 million and the general fund has 1.5 million. For total assets of 33.4 million. Total liabilities are 6 million. For fund balance is 27.4 million. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balances for the five months ending November 30th, 2020 indicates combined revenue of 13.1 million or 35% of total revenue, which is 7% under budget. Total expenditures are 14.9 million or 41% of total expenditures. Expenditures are over budget by 1%. The change in net position is a negative 1.8 million. The negative change in net position is due to revenues have not caught up to the timing of the expenditures. We should see this negative position turn around over the next several months as ad valorem taxes and occupational license are received and with the projected increase in hydro royalties. The hydro royalty payments will increase in January from 10.4 to 11.6% of gross projected receipts, while the unit cost to purchase power will remain the same. Included in these financial statements is the hydro royalty rebates in the amount of 1.28 million. Rebate checks were mailed out the week of November 16th. These financial statements also include capital outlay of 2.6 million of a $5.4 million budget or 48% of the total amount budgeted. The sewer department did purchase a camera, not included in the budget for 64-6, but it was approved by the board. Through December 16th, 2020, 1.1 million has been borrowed for the substation construction to cover materials, engineering costs, and legal fees incurred. The Aldermen have been notified before withdrawals are made so that as they can be aware of where the money is being spent. All costs are recorded as a capital asset and as a liability on the balance sheet. The appraisals are complete for the right of ways and negotiations are still pending. Construction at the City Court Building is ongoing, but the mold cleanup is finished and the windows have been sealed, ceiling tiles replaced, and the front has been pressure washed. The only thing left is to replace the flooring. We have received 62,000 this year from FEMA for 75% of the amount needed to cover the actual cost of fiber optic replacement along the riverfront and repairs through the Vidalia Canal due to the 2019 flood. The town's cost is 25% of the estimated cost to repair. The only items left are costs related to sewer and roadway improvements, repairs. We are in the final stages of receiving this funding. The town of Vidalia has applied for federal reimbursements through the State of Louisiana Cares Act for expenses and costs related to COVID-19. The town has received 488,000. The police department also received funds from the Cares Act. That is more than enough to cover the cost of the cameras approved at last month's meeting. The auditors have completed their audit and have sent their report to the legislative auditors by the due date. Once it is approved, they will present it to the Board of Aldermen.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Moke. Is any questions on the financial report? I do want to say, and her, go ahead.
Alderman Gardner?
Yes, I'm here.
Did you have a?
I have something to say pertaining to, I could not hear when we approved the minutes from the previous meeting. I know we're at agenda item number one, but I could not hear when they made the motion to approve it. But on the approval of the minutes, I do have something to say pertaining to the agenda that was previously approved for last month's meeting. Agenda item number 10, the verbiage that was used was not clear to what actually transpired on last month's meeting. And I would say that you would go back and review agenda item number 10, where I stated and said that I did not vote to approve the light cameras for the police department based on the police department being out of their budget. When I reviewed the minute, it did not state exactly what I said. It just stated that like I just was totally no, but I gave my reason as for it that was not stated as well. So if that change could reflect what the actual meeting stated and said for last month, I would greatly appreciate that.
I couldn't quite catch what I was.
Alderman Gardner, you were saying it notes in the minutes that you had voted no commenting that it is not in the budget. You were wanting something else?
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, on the previous minutes for last month's meeting, agenda item number 10, I voted no towards the police department and I gave my reason. It did not state everything that I stated. If you'll go back and review the video or the footage and listen back at it, you'll reflect what I actually said and not what's detailed in the minutes that we just approved a minute ago that I did not hear when I think Alderman Denby approved, made the motion to approve.
The minutes reflect action taken and just brief comments. They're not an exact dictation of everything that's said in our meetings. I mean, there's.
Sometimes, yes, sir, yes, sir, they are. I have read somewhere they verbatimly state and said that I vote this way because of, and that was not included in those minutes.
And a correction on that, I did not vote to approve the minute size seconded.
I can't hear her.
Alderwoman Denby noted that she did not make the motion to approve. She seconded the motion.
Oh, was seconding. I heard her say something. I couldn't, that's like I said, it wasn't clear. I couldn't hear who made the motion and who seconded it. So I just ask that you go back and review that because on agenda item number 10, it did not state me clearly for last month's meeting.
Okay. We've had a positive vote. I mean, council, what do you think on this? I mean, we've already approved the minutes as they are stated. Is this something we go back and revisit or no, we've already approved them now? I mean.
Well, you can unapprove. He's got an objection now. And I don't think we can approve the minutes until, if you desire to correct the minutes to reflect whatever he's saying, I don't think he's saying.
Well, I mean, from what I understand, his objection is we didn't put his exact words in our minutes to be reflective of his exact words. Is that something that?
I notated that my vote was reasoning because of the police department being outside of their budget. That was not inclusive in what I stated. You just said I, that Alderman Gardner voted no, as if I didn't give a reasoning to the reason why I voted no.
It shows it in the minutes that you said it was outside the budget?
It is.
That's in the minutes? Have you read them?
I have.
Okay. Do you see that where it says that the reason for your objection was that he is not for this as it is outside the budget and we could just hire police officers to do the same job? Is that not?
Let me pull, hold on, I'm pulling them up now and I can indicate and tell you what exactly I'm talking about. Okay. So on item, agenda item number 10, Alderman Gardner comments that he is not for this as it is outside the budget and we should just hire police officers to do the same. There being no further discussion, a motion, Alderman Betts, Alderman Gardner comment, oh, here's where I'm talking about, where it stated, Alderman Gardner commented that it's not in the budget. I don't remember that. I can't recall it when I went and watched the, I didn't make that second comment that it's stating that I did say. Alderman Gardner commented again stating that it's not in the budget. I stated what I had to say the first time, but I didn't make a second comment.
Okay. That's not what understood that you, your objection was. Do it now?
Okay.
We can note that we're deleting that tonight.
That's fine. I just want to get, I just want to make sure that we're within, you know.
I just want everything to reflect what I actually say and not what things that somebody else may think that I said.
What I thought we had noted, Alderman Gardner, was your objection in that when you voted no, you had wanted to make the comment that it was because it was outside the budget.
Absolutely, absolutely. So that part is correct, but that second part that said, I don't remember stating or saying that second part at all. You can go back and review the live footage from last month to make the changes, but that was not stated or said. The first part was absolutely. I wanted to notate what I actually said, so that's all I'm asking. But please notate what I actually said and don't add any additional verbiage that I did not give.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if you want, I'll take a look at that in next month's meeting.
We can amend it?
We can note that this should have said whatever it should have said.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Hang on, so.
Okay. Any other questions before we move on? We were back at our item, agenda number one. And I was making a comment to Ms. Moke, thank her for her work. The audit's complete. Silas Simmons has completed her independent audit. It's been turned into the state on time. That's something that she has been very good about doing, I think, since we've been in office, is keeping good detailed records and we're really blessed to have the work that they do. And I am proud, just not let the cat completely out of the bag, but everything looked really, really good this year. And I just want to thank her for the work that she's done. So, okay, moving on. Number two on our agenda is the occupational license. And the first one that we have is Carter Street Grill LLC. That's the building that is located, the building that used to be what we all known from Vidalia is a sand bar, Johnny Mays. And we are, Mr. Jeremy Taylor is opening that and we appreciate Jeremy coming to Vidalia and then opening, investing, and putting a business in. Jeremy, I'd like for you to tell us a little bit about what kind of food you're going to have and what your plans are.
Coming to Vidalia and then opening and investing.
The food was pretty much going to be the same as.
Hold on a second. Can I, I'd like those who are doing this virtual, if you could, if you're not speaking, could you mute your phone? It's really bleeding over some conversation and background noise. I'm hearing, I'm hearing something. If you're not talking, please mute yourself so we're not getting the background music wherever you're at. Please, I'm hearing something. But I mean, I certainly want you to talk, just unmute your phone when it comes time for you to vote or speak or you want to speak. So please, please do that. Okay, Jeremy, go ahead.
We're going to serve the normal foods that you get, hamburgers, hamburger steaks. We're going to have some seafood, oyster nights, steaks, basically a normal restaurant food. And we're also going to have bar items in there as well, as far as wine and liquor and beer and stuff like that to go along with your food.
Okay. All right. Any council got any questions? Mr. Taylor, we appreciate him coming in and making an investment in our town.
When's it open?
I'm trying for the beginning of February, but I might be a little bit later than that.
Okay. Also, just for, do we need to do a separate as far as the other license and?
I talked to council. I think we can do it all at one time as a package. You can go to as far as the sign apps and the beer liquor.
Okay. So what our clerk has said, that he's making an application. He's got a sign application. It's in your packet, which I kind of like that, the design on it. And also he's asking for the liquor and beer permit as well as a all in one request. So is there any questions on this? Do I hear a motion we accept?
I'll make a motion.
I made that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Smith. Mr. Alderman Gardner, do you want to second that?
Seconding.
Second by Alderman Gardner. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Jeremy.
Appreciate you.
Good luck to you. Okay. Second we have is DC Ag LLC. There, this is the business in Sicily Island is where they're coming from and they're opening up basically a shop, not a shop, but a sales place here in Vidalia. We appreciate them coming and they're going to be located at the corner of, where you're going to Coney, right there at the red light. So I see them doing a lot of work there and we appreciate, welcome you to Vidalia and appreciate y'all investing here in the town. You want to tell us a little bit about what y'all are going to be doing?
Sure. And thank you for having me here. Again, I'm Dennis Cooper and I bought Big B Sales in Sicily Island about two years ago. And it's a pretty large business. It does a lot of distribution work over the, across the country. But we do also have a local sales business and we sell tractors from basically 22 horsepower up to 101 horsepower. That's our primary spot is, you know, 34 horsepower is where we sell mostly. And then we're looking to kind of get a little more visibility essentially because in Sicily Island, it's pretty remote. And so we would like to, you know, service these customers here and have everybody kind of know who we are. And we're primarily just going to be a sales office here, but we have enough space in that building to maybe do some oil changes and things like that if it gets to that point. But we do have a big support organization back in Sicily Island though for anything major that we need to do, so.
When I did say, let me ask you this, like for example, if somebody does come into your sales office there, will they actually, will those titled, those vehicles be actually sales tax show up for Vidalia or will they go back to Sicily Island or how will that work?
So typically, way it works today is if someone from another parish buys a tractor from us and they pick it up, it's not clear exactly, but if you deliver it to their parish, then we pay their parish taxes.
Okay. Just like you do a vehicle then, just is that what?
Pretty much, although we don't, these don't get titled. So they're kind of, it's not 100% clear. This, that's probably knows more about than I do, but.
It's point of sale, if contract signed here, pick it up here, it's taxed here. If he delivers it to someone else, the difference between that and a vehicle is where your vehicle is taxed where you're domiciled. It's a little bit different. But his point of sale will be here. So we should see some revenue off of it.
Okay. All right. Well, good. Again, we thank you, welcome you here. And is, is there any questions from council? Do I hear a motion we accept this? Do you have your sign? Did this have a sign?
He does have a sign.
Okay. He has a sign. If you look at that, it's DC Ag LLC and he's got his sign there and that's going to be on the building. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So it's not going to be an individual standing sign. So, okay. Just wanted to make clear on that. So is there any questions? Do I hear a motion that we accept?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Second by Alderman Smith. All in favor say aye. Is any opposed?
Alderman Gardner, was yours a yea?
Aye. I said aye.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. All right. Next thing we got is board discussion, vote on approval of a resolution to accept and award the bid for the Palm Street Sewer Main Repair and Improvements to Mitchell Contract Inc. in the amount of 67,302 dollars and to authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents related to said project. Any questions on that? Ricky's here. If anybody has a question on the project itself, there were many bids set out. You'll see that in your package. Those other companies that were sent bid packages, but that was the only one that was turned in. Any questions? If not, do I hear a motion we accept the bid?
I'll make a motion we accept the bid.
Motion made by Alderman Betts to accept the bid. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, was that Alderman Probst? Okay. All right. Second by Alderman Probst. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Now have a report on status of request from Vidalia Cemetery Association for the town-owned reclaimed asphalt material for use on cemetery roads. George has done some research. We haven't completed that yet. The research is still ongoing, but you know, some of the things that we have run into is there are some restrictions. However, we are trying to make sure that we can get a good definition and it could wind up that we may have to get an attorney general opinion on how we could structure this to go forward with it. I know y'all want it to be right and we certainly want it to be right, but this is where our council is on as far as his research on it. And of course, I'm not an attorney. He is and I certainly trust his judgment with him to keep us out of trouble on things of matters like that. So, you know, we're still researching it, but it might come down to getting an attorney general opinion on this. And some of the cases that he's looking at is the Cabela's case that has been kind of a benchmark for some of these type things to look at to make sure they hit certain criteria that you can do these things. So we are working on it and I promise you, we're working hard on them to get something and get something and get a final answer on that. So if, does anybody have any questions on the board, of course, the cemetery board is here. Because we, I think our council voted, we do want to move forward with that if we can get good clearance that, that this is a legal thing we can do. And that's what the council approved based on us doing our research. And right now, we haven't got a final ruling on that, but we put it on here so we could update you and let you know where we're at. Has anybody got any question on that as far as any council members or?
So will this be on the agenda every month until we have a finalization of the cemetery?
Well, it depends. You know, once before Alderman Gardner, I have sent off an attorney general opinion and it has taken, you know, it could take two months to three months to sometimes get an opinion. So to tell you how long it's going to take, you would have to call the attorney general and ask him. But I don't know how long those things. I know the one that I did have, that I did myself back dealing with a dual office holding issue that was brought up several years ago. It took about three to four months to get.
So when did we submit the information? So what's the date on us submitting to the attorney general's office?
We haven't submitted it yet. Now, council's just met with me today on his research and what he's found to this point. And based on his opinion, he cited these things and he reviewed it with me and this is what we're doing now and letting you know today where we're at on it that we may have to get an attorney general opinion to go forward with it to get a ruling on it. So that's.
Which is great. And I appreciate that. But my question is, when do we think we will have this submitted by? Do we have a?
Well, we can submit it. We could submit it this week. I mean, I just, that's why we're reporting where we're at. We want to let everybody know that, you know, this is something that we want to make sure we get right. And that's what the council directed us to. And I think, I think that I want the Cemetery Association to know that all of us are on board to do it. So there's not any problem there from us. And I promise you, if it was, if council would have said, you know, let's do the CEA, let's get it done, we'd be moving asphalt tomorrow. So, but that's just not the case, but we want to make sure we get it right, so. Yeah. Oh, I know. Yeah, you're right. Yeah. It is. So anyway, any other questions on that? Okay. Yeah.
As my experience dealing with the attorney general on giving opinions, you often will commit that to the attorney general, but they can be working on it looking at. You don't have to wait there after he comes to the other, he's your attorney. But you can still go on and get this to the attorney general to get their opinion. Because it depends on going right now to then by time that he, if you send a gift in there, where that attorney general can receive, where else you find out. And y'all, you can move it to the class. The longer you wait, the longer the attorney general. You might have other thing in front of you waiting, hold your time, get it done. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But that's the experience I had down when you deal, dealing with a attorney general. If this boy sends something out to the attorney general, he'll want to fight that.
Well, we'll sit, we'll sit down there this week. I can't take. We want to make sure though, we represent what's being turned in completely. I mean, you can't just say, you got to give all aspects of it. Where it's coming from, where it's being, you know, and the whole thing. So you got to, because there's a couple more questions I'll have and we'll talk after this because, you know, if we deliver it, you know, I mean, we're going to deliver it. I mean, who's going to spread it? You know, that sort of thing. There was a lot of things that we want to make sure that we, there's a lot of things that's going to happen to get that there and done, that it's just not just the given of it. It's also what's going to happen when it gets there. Well, that's what, we want to make sure we do that right, so. Okay?
My, I have met with the attorney general, Bernard and I, for the Cemetery Association, and we are still, you know, talking to them on basis of different things after that. And then that's going to improve and I think you do have it. We went to the office and we talked to it. So they're aware of some things that's going on up here.
Okay.
And Anna O'Quinn is the lady that I have been talking with at all times.
At her office?
I have talked to.
Okay. Well, if you'll give that contact since she's familiar with it, we'll send it. If she's one of the staff attorneys, just, you know, get with us, get with me tomorrow and let us get all her contact information since she's in the loop, maybe that'll speed it up. Because we certainly want to make, I want to make sure it happens, so. Because I'd like to see that happen, so. Because to me, it's, right. That's right. Okay. I don't think there's any action on that, just for discussion. The next thing that we have, item number five, this is our last thing that we got on our agenda, is discussion related to enforcement and possible revisions of various ordinances currently in place in the municipal code. Let me set the table on just what we, this is for, this is for us to just, I'm going to put together maybe a committee and I would like to ask Ms. Rose and Brenna, if they were serving on that, along with the police chief and maybe a couple others on some of these things throughout our ordinances that need to be addressed. And I'm going to give you a perfect example. There's an ordinance and there's been some question brought up about fireworks, that fireworks are prohibited in Vidalia. You know how old that ordinance is, in 1946? Is that ordinance, that's how old it is? And we know there's been a couple firecrackers pop since 1946 in Vidalia, Louisiana. I know I did my share of them. And so what the chief is wanting to do, he's wanting to get an ordinance that can reflect something that can, is enforceable. Because if it's prohibited, what about the fireworks over the river? I mean, where do you draw the lines? You need to draw distinctions and have something that's enforceable and not just pick and choose what you're going to enforce, what you're not going to enforce. My opinion, there's something like, would it be investigated? We all, I'm for one, I want to see our children have the same fun with fireworks that I had when I grew up because that was when a lot of families got together and have fireworks at special times of the year, whether it's New Year's, Fourth of July, Christmas, but after that, maybe not have, maybe they're not legal. And take, say, New Year's night, let them, you know, put a curfew on it when it ends. Let, make it end at one o'clock on, you know, on New Year's that day. Because I'd rather have kids shooting bottle rockets and people walking out in their yard shooting rifles and guns up in there, having bullets go all over town. And how are you going to find out who did all that? You're not going to be able to do that. So let's, this is, we want to put some common sense, really good things. And I'm going to give you know, just for example, did you know that it is against, it's an ordinance on our books and it specifically says it is unlawful to ride a bicycle on any sidewalk in the town of Vidalia. and it specifically says it is unlawful to ride a bicycle on any sidewalk in the town of Vidalia? Does that shock you? So it's, I, you, 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 you know, and somebody wants to push and there's some people who would push it, you're not doing your job. I saw a kid riding a bike on the, on the sidewalk. How foolish is that? How foolish is that? So we need to look at some of these things that are foot, that, that, you know, I don't know why that came out to be, but we want to look at those and make these things be more reflective on real life that people can really, you know, uh, you know, deal with. That's all this is. I don't want to get in tonight on what those things are. I will ask anybody in the public who has an issue with anything on our ordinance, call us up. Tell us what it is that you want to see enforced and we'll investigate it and look at it, just like the bicycles. Is there anybody in here that's against seeing a kid ride a bicycle on a sidewalk? It doesn't say it's against law for him to ride them on the streets. Where do you want your kid riding this bicycle? All I'm saying is, this, let's use some common sense, because, uh, this is, you know, we are, we're a new time here where we, we need to do and bring our, our code book up to what it should be. Uh, has anybody got any questions on what we're gonna be looking at or just, uh, some of that? Has anybody got a question? Anybody on council have a question on that?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Does it say that no firecrackers are?
It says no fireworks are prohibited.
Prohibited.
Period.
Period.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the sale of fireworks.
The sale or use or distribution of them, yes, ma'am.
We are certainly out of compliance then.
So, and this is some things we're addressing. This is not, we're not gonna get into it tonight. We're just gonna, we're gonna investigate it and I, I'd like for y'all to serve on that and us to work together, we'll set up meetings. Uh, we recently had a signed ordinance, uh, and I think, uh, Alderman, I mean, uh, our clerk is setting up a meeting on our first, uh, where we're gonna be looking at our signed ordinances, uh, relooking at those. And Jay will be, this, these meetings will be public, by the way. People can come to those, they will be noticed. And people want to attend these meetings and have discussion on them, you're welcome to come. We, in fact, we encourage you to come and give us your input.
Point towards January twenty-first.
January twenty-first is a signed ordinance, uh, meeting?
So we're gonna verify everything, confirm it with, uh, Alderman Betts and Probst at Thursday evening, Thursday week, so twenty-fourth.
Okay, anybody got any question on that? Okay, well, that completes our agenda item. Do I hear a motion we adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Denby. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank y'all.
See you later.
Appreciate it.